Articles one and two is set out below. Said articles being the following. Article one, to elect a moderator by written ballot to preside at said meeting and fix compensation therefore. Do I have any nominations for moderator?
Eric.
Eric is here if somebody wants to nominate him.
I nominate.
Eric, what's his left?
Stumpf.
Second.
Do I have any other nominations? I need paper ballots cast. I don't know if everybody wants to do it. I need at least three to vote for Eric to vote to do it. I have three ballots cast, all for Eric. Do you, Eric Stumpf, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as you shall continue a citizen thereof so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Eric Stumpf, do swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent on you as moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution and laws of this state so help God?
I do. Thank you, folks, for letting me be your moderator again this evening. I apologize for cutting it so close. I made a wrong turn in Carmel. I wound up doubling back to exit. I took two of them. We only have one item of business on two nights' warrant, but it is a very important item, and that's Article two. To see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed six-twolths of the budgeted amount.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Does someone want to be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Can we have the compensation fixed with the moderator?
That was supposed to be part of your motion. Since that was not made part of your motion, my assumption is the moderator serves without compensation this evening.
The moderator of what?
Will serve without compensation.
Well, thank you.
Since nothing was set. But thank you for asking the question. So again, Article two, to see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed six-twolths of the budgeted amount in each budget category during the period beginning July 1st, 2016, until such time as the annual budget is adopted, and the board of selectmen recommend yes. First, is there a motion to get this on the floor? Anyone care to move the article?
Make motion to pass. The article is read.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
I move to second it. Any questions or discussion of the article? Yes, ma'am.
Which budget are we talking about? Are we talking about six-twolths of the proposed budget that was proposed at the Georgetown meeting? Or are we talking about six-twolths of this past year's budget?
The only amount that has actually been budgeted by the town and an approved budget is last year's budget, so...
So this is six-twolths of last year's?
Of last year's budget amounts in each category.
Last year's budget was a sixteen, eighteen-month budget.
I certainly would entertain an amendment to clarify that, since that was an eighteen-month budget. You might say, move to amend it to say, six-eighteenths or nine-eighteenths of the 2015 budget.
How much will we need for this?
If there's a motion to amend, I'd be happy to entertain that. If there's not, it's going to be fifty percent. Six-twolths of an eighteen-month budget is going to be nine months' worth of expenditures. Yes, sir.
I could make a motion to change that to one-third of last year's budget.
Okay. It's been moved to change that to one-third of last year's budget. Is there a second on that amendment?
No, that's too much.
Sir, in the back?
But still three times more than what we need for the next two months.
I haven't yet heard a second to that amendment, so if there's no second, we can consider other amendments.
I'll second it.
Still seconded. Okay, any discussion of that amendment? Yes, sir.
That amendment is three times more than we need for the next two months.
And you have two options. If you don't like that figure, you can vote against this amendment, propose a different one, or I will allow, if you wish to, a motion to amend this amendment. That's as deep as I'll get. But otherwise, we will have a discussion and then vote on the amendment, and if you don't like that amendment, we'll propose a different one.
To one-third?
Can you legally change the amendment where this is the article? Can you legally change it from what it reads right now? Where this is a special town meeting?
Yes. You can reduce this amount, this authority. What this article does, it places all the voters of the town on notice that this meeting, this special town meeting, could authorize the selectmen to spend up to six-twolths, one-half of last year's budget. If you vote to authorize the selectmen to spend, yes, than that, less than that, then everyone in town, no one in town is affected in terms of the notice they've received. In other words, everybody reading this warrant knows that you are at risk of authorizing the selectmen to spend up to half of last year's budget. If you authorize them to spend less than that, there's been no violation of their right to notice of this meeting. If you authorize them to spend more than that, I would rule that out of order, because this warrant article does not give proper notice of that possibility. Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I have figured out for a month how much would be on last year's budget, the eighteen-month budget. It would come out to $157,795 per month. Could we double that number and make an amendment to it to appropriate only $315,590? That would be two months.
You can do that, but the amendment on the floor right now is to authorize the selectmen to spend one-third of last year's budget, up to one-third.
Can I ask this one, what was the reasoning for choosing six-twolths?
Well...
Is there something getting coming out that we need to...
Thank you. We have two... We try to take into consideration July, August, and maybe September, if we needed it. So just three months' school payment is $264,000. It's all right here. The county tax is due September 1st. That's $131,943. There's regular payroll, there's regular things. Other than that, there's cemetery mowing has to go out, roadside mowing has to go out, trash pickup, you know. We're just trying to cover the bills, folks. That's all we're trying to do. That's why we picked the six-twolths.
Yes, ma'am, and then the gentleman in the back.
Can you tell us what six-twolths would be, Renee?
From last year's total budget.
I can. I'm asking a select person, thank you anyway. Okay? I have it right here.
You have it right there, Helen. Do you have it, Cindy?
$1,420,155.
Say that again, Helen.
Yes, sir, in the back.
I have a question. I believe we're asking for six-twolths of the budget. I believe what we've done in the history of Newburg is you ask for three-twolths, but we're not asking for last year's budget. What they're asking for is a budget from July 1st to next year. So last year's does not apply at all. The article said three, six-twolths.
Of, actually, in my mind, it was six-twolths of the proposed budget.
Correct.
I'm not taking into consideration a budget that we've already spent.
Correct. It's for next year. All you're authorized, you're not authorizing them to spend the six-twolths of last year's budget.
Right.
Just what was in the articles for the town meeting for this year, which would be the current year. So I think that's what we're talking about. So I agree with what everybody's saying, but I think we're just saying it two different ways.
Right, but the moderator said, his interpretation was that the budget they're referring to is last year's budget.
That would be how I would read the article, and that's consistent with how these types of articles are done in most other towns. But there is some ambiguity, because it simply says the budget. It doesn't say which year's budget. There is an amendment proposal on the floor to make that read one-third of last year's budget. We can vote on that amendment. If you don't like that amendment, we can propose another amendment to clarify.
Let's do that, because that's really not the intention.
Is there further discussion of the proposed amendment that's on the floor?
I would like to hear what the intent was, if the selectmen could explain that to us.
The intent was, we know that Mike's right. Usually, they propose spending three-twolths of the current year budget, but given the postponement and you don't know what's going to happen in August, so that's why we said, let's do six-twolths of the proposed budget. That way, you know, even if you had to go into September or November, you've got $88,000 a month going out just to the school. That's not just your regular bills, your payroll, your everything else. So, like I said, that was the original intent. Six-twolths of the current proposed budget.
Yes, ma'am. This concerns the proposed amendment, so I'll certainly allow questions.
Instead of doing a six-twolths, why don't they have a dollar amount? Why don't you give us a dollar amount that you're asking for?
We can do that, but we need to deal with the amendment first, okay? Any other discussion of the proposed amendment? Okay, the proposed, yes, sir.
I would ask Cindy, what is the situation with the assessor?
With the what?
The assessor.
The assessor?
When we're going to have an assessment.
You mean the auditor?
An audit?
You expect we'll have that completed by the August town meeting?
The audit, the auditor is coming the 12th, and she, there's a note right over there, an email. She will hopefully have a draft. She will not have a final audit.
Does he know a final audit by the time?
If you would like to, I want me to read this to him? No. This is what the email said this morning. Cindy, as we discussed on the phone this morning, I cannot guarantee a final audit report and financial statements by August 20th. As long as all financial records are available and up to date, we should be able to provide a draft report in that timeframe. Let me know if you or any of the board members have questions. If not, I will see you on July 12th to get the audit process started.
Renee, do you anticipate then by the town meeting in August, we will not have a completed audit?
We will not have a completed audit. I do not anticipate we will have...
Any indication of when we could expect?
Their RFP says they have up to four months.
Up to four months.
They have up to four months to provide a final audit.
That would put it into September, October.
October.
So in your budget calculations, you've gone and included all expenditures through October.
What we've taken into consideration is if we get into the August meeting and we have another problem and it's delayed, we're going to have to do this again to pay the bills for September and October, is what I'm guessing.
The reason our expectation is we need to have enough money to run through...
Right. I do not have an exact figure. I do not.
This gentleman in the back and then this lady.
I hope I'm not out of order, but I have more of a question than anything else.
Questions are fine, as long as they're...
My question is, okay, we already have warrants from our town meeting that specify amounts for each category.
Yes.
If we allow this, whatever figure we come up with here tonight, to carry, how is that going to, when we go back to those articles?
Yes.
Can we change those amounts?
They can be changed. There'll be, when you come back on August 20th, or if you postpone to a later date, at that time, when you finally do act on those budget articles, they can be amended.
But those...
With this type of authority, with this type of authority, you're not raising any new taxes. Your, any appropriations authority that is the result of this article tonight will have to come out of your town fund balance until you've actually voted to set a new budget, raise taxes, and send those taxes out for collection.
We can't send out tax bills and raise money until we have an approved budget.
I understand that. My point, my question is, because I know wording can be tricky in some of these warrants, and if it's not worded correctly, then we are unable to reduce the amount in there. Yeah. We've run into this before. What I'm saying is, I don't want to give you a half a million dollars tonight and then have to give you the full budget again when we're appropriating, because this is a half a million dollars.
Well, if we, if I understand...
It's trying to keep it back and forth.
Right. If I understand Eric correctly, if we clear the current motion on the floor, we can amend this to say, six-twolths of the proposed budget, and that would clear that up.
That's still my question.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to go back, I know you're trying to move the motion. If he rescinds his two-thirds, can we go back to this one of doing it monthly? If she's got a monthly figure, what we need, one, two, three months?
If the gentleman's proposed amendment is withdrawn, and the second's withdrawn, or if we voted and the vote is no on the amendment, then yes, a new amendment will be in order.
Can I just say one thing? This article reads, six-twolths of the budgeted amount in each budget category, so we can't, it doesn't say we can add to the categories. It doesn't say any of those things. It's just allowing us to spend six-twolths of the budget in each category.
Right. But again, we're talking monthly. If she's got a monthly figure there, and we're talking August, September, October...
How are you going to put, the county tax is due in one lump sum, Linda?
Allow me to recognize the speakers, please.
Thank you.
If she can do August, September, October, and we vote to spend that amount, it would come out of those categories anyway.
It would be charged, when you get a final budget, it would be charged against those budgeted amounts.
Right.
But as far as writing the checks until then, you're writing them against your fund balance.
Right. I realize that, but what we're trying to do, and a lot of us here are concerned, is we hold it down as much as we can. So if we get to the final budget, we haven't overspent over our items.
Yes, ma'am.
This isn't a numbers thing, but how as a town do we not know how much we're going to spend? If we know there's a county thing, then why aren't we saving each month for that? Why aren't we preparing for this school budget thing? Why do we not know how much we're going to need?
We have to allocate that.
We do that with taxes. That's what taxes does. We pass the budget at the annual town meeting.
Right. So then we should know, we shouldn't have to have these meetings. We should know how much we need so we can pay them when they come due. Just like, I know every month my household is going to be served out. I have to save up a month and pay for it. Why are we not doing that as a town?
That is sort of the simplified version of that.
It's very simple.
And I don't disagree with you, but...
I'm just asking why we don't do it that way.
Well, I don't know.
I want to go back and dispose of the gentleman's amendment. If that's still on the floor, are there any other comments concerning the proposed amendment? The motion is to amend the article to read, one-third of last year's annual budget in each category. Any other discussion of that amendment? All in favor of that amendment, please raise your hands. All opposed? Okay, that amendment is defeated. Now, the floor is open for other amendments. Yes, ma'am.
I would make an amendment?
Well, or for, to move the article as drafted.
I would amend, I would ask to amend the article to say that the selectmen are allowed to spend four-twolths of the 2016 budget.
The proposed 2016.
The proposed budget. That gives that enough to operate for four months, and I mean, we ought to have an audit by October, if not before.
Is there a second? I hear a second. Any discussion of that amendment? I don't have any, yes, ma'am.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. Do you have any comments about that?
There's a girl in the back.
Because four-twolths is enough to cover the amounts that are listed, like the county taxes that are doing a lump sum.
Those are 100%.
So do we have to have this six-twolths in order to cover those lump sum payments that are coming due?
The county taxes due September 1st, and it's all at once.
Okay, but, so that must come out of a category, though. So the category it comes out of for the proposed budget...
That's the whole budget for it.
But you'd still be capped at...
Four-twolths.
We would still be capped at four-twolths.
You still would only be able to pay one-third of it.
We'd only be able to pay one-third of that.
No, because there's no article in the warrant last year or this year. We pay that automatically.
Oh, there's no article about the county tax.
So that can be paid no matter how many we agree upon?
Yeah.
Is four months enough for you guys to be able to do what you need to do?
It is. We should have an audit by then, but if we don't have an audit and they don't pass the articles in August, it puts tax bills off, which is going to mess up escrows, it's just going to be a mess. I got banks now calling, one of the tax bills going out. They thought they would be out by now.
Makes most everybody happy to at least do the, to do the four months, and gives you guys enough to do what you need to do. We already have our meeting scheduled for...
August 20th.
So we could possibly come back in August, not have what everybody wants, our audit paper, and then agree to do another two months? Is that a possibility?
It's a possibility. You can do, the town can vote to do whatever they want, but the big issue is, is the more this is put off, the more tax bills are put off, because we can't do taxes without finalizing the annual budget.
So that means there's no money coming in. We have to take money from fund balance.
Okay. This lady and this lady and this lady.
I think you're confusing two things. You know, tax bills are not going to go out until we pass a budget.
Correct.
So if we don't pass the budget in August, then hopefully we'll be, you know, whenever the audit comes out, we'll have a town meeting, and then we'll pass a budget, and the tax bills will go out. That has nothing to do with how much of the budgeted amounts you need to spend. That's four-twolths. That has nothing to do with tax bills going out.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying when we don't send out tax bills, you're taking, you're paying your bills from your fund balance. All the money's coming from fund balance.
We can have an audit by August 20th.
We're...
Then we won't have that problem.
Yes, ma'am, we won't have it.
We won't have, but we won't have an audit. Right, we won't have a final audit.
Please.
Can you tell me which budget you're taking this four months from?
The motion is to take it from the fiscal 2016, the proposed budget.
How much money that would be?
No.
Tell me, and again, tell us how much money it would be?
No.
Well, it's a little over $700,000. Can you get by on that?
Gentlemen in the green.
Helen, she can't tell you the answer, because the town meeting hasn't happened yet.
I understand that.
She hasn't had a set number. All she has is a proposed number.
That's right, and I'm using a proposed number. All I'm using is a proposed number. I took the twelve months of $210,000.
The amendment on the floor is to amend the article to say, four-twolths of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2016-17. So that is a number that you will establish if you...
It is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, Article two says, I'm not going to read it all, but it says, six-twolths of the budgeted amount in each budget category. If you're going with four-twolths or whatever, that says each budget category.
Yes, it does.
So if you only have six-twolths of your budget figure for taxes, you still can't pay them.
I'm not sure I follow that statement, but it is true that if you only have, whether it's four-twolths or six-twolths, you could not exceed that percentage of the proposed budget figure, even if you had other, you know, even if you hadn't spent the full amount in the other budget categories.
That's what I'm saying. They're saying, we have, I know that the taxes have to be paid once a year, on plumb, right? If you November 1st, right?
What tax?
Interest.
County tax?
Yeah.
September 1st, yes.
September 1st, okay. If the new September 1st, where we only give you four-twolths of the budget amount in each budget category, which is what the thing says, you're not going to have the money to pay it anyway.
No, not unless you pass it in August. If you pass the budget in August, we'll be able to pay the county tax.
I believe the gentleman in green was next, or have you spoken?
No, but I did, could you read, could you do the motion again?
The amendment, the original motion or the amendment?
No, the amendment, because I believe it said it was proposed budget.
Yes, the amendment that was made was to, would revise Article two to say, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed four-twolths of the budgeted amount for fiscal year 2016-17, in each, or the proposed budget amount, rather, in, for fiscal 2016-17, in each budget category during the period beginning July 1st, 2016, and so on. So, if you approve the amendment, the selectmen will have authority to spend four-twolths of the figures shown in that proposed budget that you haven't acted on yet, in each of the budget categories listed in that proposed budget.
I just want to clarify something about this bill that we have to pay by September 1st. It is due by September 1st. Interest does not start until November 1st, and in the past, we've always paid it at the end of October. So there's no consequences to us not paying it right on September 1st. And as I said, this is enough money to keep going through October, and hopefully by then we're going to have a town meeting and have a budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would like to know what our fund balance is. I don't think I saw that in the annual report.
It's in the handout that was on the table.
Well, we got that the day of the meeting.
No, this one I did this morning. This was as of last year. When I closed the books on June 30th, the fund balance was $986,847, which will change. It's not, because the auditor will adjust stuff, and we do have some projects, road projects that are committed, which will come out of that.
But this is what you're using right now without a project having been passed?
Yes.
That's what they would be using if you give them the authority to do that by passing some version of this article. Right now, they have no authority to write checks for anything. Any other questions or comments on the proposed amendment? Yes, sir. That whole thing's got to be paid if we don't get four-twolths of that. Anyone care to respond?
Well, go ahead.
Well, let me back up a little bit. When we were talking about a figure to use and propose for paying the bills, we initially started with the idea of going to August 20th for the town meeting, but realizing that we probably wouldn't have the audit done, knowing the attitude of the town wanting an audit prepared, we went to six-twolths to give us a little leeway so that we wouldn't have to go through another town meeting to get permission to spend more money, and to also give us a little leeway with, for example, if you give us four-twolths of the cemetery mowing, we've got a figure of $1,820. If we are only able to pay four-twolths of that, even six-twolths, you know, that's going to be probably due October, I'm guessing so. So the reason we went to the six-twolths was really to give us a little bit of leeway for unanticipated things like this. Yes, ma'am.
The question still stands, do you think that was...
Lady in the purple was recognized by the moderator. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, sir, the lady in the purple was recognized by the...
So what does, right now, the article reads that it's in each budget category. Can that be changed to a flat amount of figure without it being in each budget category?
You can do that, but you have another proposed amendment on the floor right now.
No, but can it be changed to read that way?
It could be, yes.
So it wouldn't have to be budgeted by category? You could just do the lump, four-twolths, or whatever, to be used out of funds, but not budgeted for thus and such category? Might have to tighten your belt on something that doesn't have to be done right this minute in order to pay a bill that might be due. Am I correct?
That amendment could be proposed, but we have to deal with this amendment first.
Right, but it could be done that way.
It could be, operative amendment, yes, but we have to deal with this amendment first. The amendment... The amendment on the floor is to amend the article to authorize the selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed four twelfths of the proposed budgeted amount for fiscal year 2016-17 in each budget category during the period beginning July 1st, 2016, until such time as the annual budget is adopted. That's the amendment that would revise the article to read that way. Last comment.
I would like to point out that our selectmen are also business owners, and I have confidence in them that if they feel that they need six twelfths, that they do need that amount. And I have trust in them that they're asking for just what they need.
The amendment on the floor proposes four twelfths of the proposed budget. Is there any last comment? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the amendment. The amendment would change six twelfths to four twelfths, and it would reference the proposed budget and not, and not just the budget. All in favor of the proposed amendment, please raise your hands. We may need some help counting here. Eleven. All opposed, please raise your hands. In the moderator's opinion, the amendment failed passage. If anyone disputes that, we'll have a count. Okay, the amendment fails. Are there other proposed amendments?
I, I propose that, well, do I have to propose to put it back to the six twelfths?
No, it's, it's, it's as proposed originally, it's in six twelfths. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now can we go back to four twelfths without putting it in categories, budget categories?
You could delete the phrase, you could propose four twelfths, but delete the phrase, in each budget category.
Would that, that then cover?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Would that then cover if we do it that way?
Is anyone on the table?
You want to take a stab at that answer?
Just four twelfths of the total budget?
It is seven-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars, is what it is, that you would be getting to do any way you want to. You will don't have much more than that fund balance now.
Whatever you guys decide, we'll make it work.
I make a motion, we raise four twelfths of the proposed budget for the, for the town to pay bill.
Okay, you're not, you, you won't be raising that money at this meeting, but, but that would be an amendment to say four twelfths of the.
Well, I'm trying to get it for what she's doing, you know?
All right, I'll, I'll help you out here. I, I would. I would rephrase that proposed amendment as amending the article to read, four twelfths of the proposed budgeted amount for fiscal year 2016-17.
I don't know, I didn't do that, because you don't have payroll in here, you don't have lights, you don't have all your insurances.
Been moved to second. Any questions, comments, or discussions about that amendment? Again, as amended, if you approve this amendment, the article will read, "To see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed four twelfths of the proposed budgeted amount for fiscal year 2016-17 during the period beginning July 1st, 2016, until such time as that the annual budget is adopted." That would be how the article would read as amended. Any discussion of the amendments that would do that?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is more, four twelfths of the budgeted categories. So they've already approved the school budget, so does that automatically make us allowed to, to spend the school payment?
Yeah.
Because they've already voted and approved that school budget.
You don't have any choice on the school budget?
I would say probably yes, but I would, I'm stepping outside my role as moderator to do that, and I'd want to look at the actual approval vote and the statute to give you any legal opinion on that. So I can't really do that authoritatively on the spot.
I just was wondering, that's all. I just don't want to get in trouble with.
Okay, we could, I could certainly provide advice to selectmen.
Sir?
Yes.
Can I ask the selectmen something? Would you prefer to have it in fractions, or would you prefer to have a dollar figure given to you to work with, and you can go to any account, put it in any account you wish, anywhere you wish, and then you can pay whatever has to be paid?
Right, because what, I'm sitting here thinking, you've got payroll, you've got insurances. You've got the cemetery, we've got roadside mowing that hasn't even gone out to bid yet. You know, you say, what does it cost each month? Well, each month differs depending on what time of year it is, so.
The effect, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
But we've had mowing for years, and we've had these different things for years. So yes, it's going to fluctuate, but you can have a general idea of this is what it's going to cost each year. And then you plan throughout the year for that, so that we don't have to have emergency meetings for lawn mowing and for.
Well, this is an emergency meeting for lawn mowing, obviously.
Right, but you know what I mean? That's why, that's why we're supposed to town budget for these things.
Well, my, my point is, it's, it, there's a lot of things that go into, you know, the whole, the whole pie, so.
The effect of the proposed amendment, if you approve it, would be to authorize the selectmen to spend four twelfths of the proposed budget on any and all town expenses, not limited by category of expense. There wouldn't be a cap on any particular category.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
I don't really see what the problem is with the four twelfths. I mean, from Helen's numbers, is she saying seven-hundred-thousand dollars on four twelfths?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the four twelfths.
You do six twelfths, it doesn't sound like you have the money to do it, really. You don't have it. Because you have to raise that money.
Right, you have to raise it. We haven't, we haven't sent our bills out, so we don't get any money. Yeah.
So you've got, right now, what's on the floor is four twelfths to spend any way you want to spend it.
I agree.
So there's no budget.
Is that?
It doesn't go, it doesn't fall under a category.
Well, it, well.
You can use it whatever, whatever way you want.
Well, this, but the school is our only question, is your only question?
Mike, the only question is, is they're allowing, they're authorizing four twelfths of the budgeted categories.
No.
Four twelfths of the total budget?
Next year of this proposed budget. It's open, you can.
So that would work with the schools, yeah.
And limit it as you need it.
So that, they, so that would work with the school?
That's the way to do it.
The amendment would delete the words budgeted category.
Each category.
What are your thoughts on that?
Other discussion of the amendment?
All right.
Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the amendment. And again, it would, it would reduce six twelfths to four twelfths. It would delete the reference to budgeted categories, and it would refer to the proposed FY 2016-17 budget specifically. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands. All opposed? Okay, the amendment is passed. Now, is there a discussion of the article as amended? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the article as amended. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? The article is passed as amended. Okay, no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:40 P.M.
Make the motion to adjourn.
For a second, all in favor? We are adjourned.
Well, there.
I don't mean to confuse you, and I didn't mean that.
Well, I don't have any material in front of me.
I know you don't, but you know, I, I took the time because I knew that there was going to be questions of how much it was. It was all I had done.
Okay.
It was all I could do. I'm glad we got some money to.
Right, exactly. All we're trying to do is pay the bills.
I know you are, I know you are.
Okay, all right. So we're not being monitored for tonight. It's a nice guy.